Johnny.
Be careful, I've got myself in a lot of trouble over the years.
You didn't get the memo? We like to set the tone.
Weird.
Not having them.
Keep your eyes glass. Yeah.
It's five twenty-nine.
You've got ten seconds.
I have ten seconds. The clerk says we have ten seconds.
There we go.
Being that the time is five thirty, I will like to call the June sixth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three meeting of the city council to order. You all have risen, thank you, so we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under I, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On May nineteenth, the clerk and I both signed the civility pledge. It was passed May sixteenth, so I would just like to read the civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. So I'd just like to make sure at the council meetings that we follow the civility pledge, please. From there, from there, the clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Yeah.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mayor Buscher.
I'm here.
Madam Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. We do not have any proclamations this evening, but we do have a presentation. Tonight's presentation is by Capital Area Realtors. Nash Aldenettle is going to read us some information on the presentation regarding ordinance ninety-eight point zero six chronic nuisances.
One second, I'm just gonna hand out the ordinance to everyone.
Which Nicole's coming to help me with, thank you, Nicole.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Check out my tushy clothes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me talk to you all. First off, my name's Nash Aldenettle with Illinois Realtors, representing the Capital Area Realtors today. What we're gonna go over here today is just ordinance ninety, ninety-eight point zero six chronic nuisance. It's just a little policy brief. The purpose of it is just to bring highlights of what it does, what it allows the city to do, and what can be implemented. So the definition for ninety-eight point zero six chronic or chronic nuisances is any property with, within the city of Springfield which becomes a chronic nuisance property is in violation of this chapter and is subject to its remedies. Any person in charge who permits property under his or her ownership or control to be a chronic nuisance property shall be in violation of this chapter and subject to its remedies. Definition of a chronic nuisance property. Chronic nuisance property is a property that either, within a twenty-four month period, and as a result of no less than three separate inspections or incidents, multiple inspections or incidents which occur on the same calendar date shall not be considered separate inspections or incidents, has been the source of three or more violations of this code. For purposes of this ninety-eight point zero six B one I and ninety-eight point zero six D A violation shall mean a finding by an administrative hearing officer that a violation of the city's code which in turn serves as one of the violations described in one seventy point seventeen point six seventy has occurred on or at the property in question. So under one seventy point seventeen sixty seventy is, covers class one, class two, class three, which ranges from garbage, debris, tall grass, abandoned vehicles, to structure failures. Two, control. The ability to regulate, restrain, dominate, counteract, or govern conduct that occurs on property. Three, owner. Any person, agent, firm, or corporation having any legal or equitable interest in the property. Owner includes but is not limited to a mortgagee in possession in whom is vested all or part of the legal title to the property or all or part of the beneficial ownership and the right to the present use and enjoyment of the premises, or an occupant who can control what occurs on the property. A permit to suffer, allow, consequent to acquistance by failure to prevent, or expressly assent or agree to doing of an act. First. Person. Any natural person, association, partnership, or corporation cap capable of owning or using property to the city of Springfield, a person in charge, any person in actual or constructive possession of a property, including but not limited to an owner, occupant of property under his or her domain, ownership, or control property, any real property, including land which is affixed, incidental, or pertinent to the land, including but not limited to any premises, room, house, building, or structure, or any separate room possession portion thereof. So under the commitment commencement of action under this ordinance, the owners of a property designated to a chronic nuisance property by the city shall be serving with process in a manner reasonably calculated to give them notice, including, as appropriate, service by first-class mail, posted preparation to the address shown by the records of Sangamon County as the persons or entity responsible for paying property taxes on the subject property or personal service on the owner. In conclusion of the hearing, the administrative hearing officer shall make a determination in writing whether the property is a chronic nuisance property as provided this ordinance. The decision of the administrative hearing officer shall include findings supporting the final determination. The failure of any owner to appear at the adjunctary hearing shall not relieve the city of its burden, so on and so on. Next. Under these, the following, here, I forgot to skip, skipped a little bit, sorry, guys. Upon the final decision by the administrative hearing officer designating a property a chronic nuisance property in absent a stay of such designation by the court of competence jurisdiction, the chronic nuisance property and its owner shall be subject to the following. It should be subject to a fine of a thousand dollars, which I know was discussed previously in a city council, is being really high, payable to the city within thirty days of the final determination, having an inspection within thirty days from the date of the property being determined a nuisance property, which shall be reported to the Department of Building and Zoning within seven days of the inspection, where the owners must certify to the Department of Building and Zoning that all violations in the inspection have been repaired, corrected, cured, or mitigated. Within thirty days from the date that the property was determined by the administrative hearing officer to the chronic nuisance property, the owners of that property shall file with the Department of Building and Zoning an annual registration statement for that property. Any such registration statement shall be prima facie proof of the statement therein contained in any administrative enforcement proceeding or court proceeding instituted by the city as the chronic nuisance property. The registration statement shall contain the following information. The name, street address, and telephone number of each owner of the property. If the owner of the property is in a partnership, corporation, LLC, or voluntary unincorporated association, the statement shall further include the name, street address, and telephone number of each partner that's involved with that association or LLC. Going further into that, it says, each member in case of the member-managed LLC and the name, street address, and telephone number of the natural person, twenty-one years or older, designated by the owners of the chronic nuisance property as the authorized agent for receiving notices of the code violations or citations, and receiving process in E Court proceeding of administrative enforcement proceedings on behalf of the owners in connection with the enforcement of this code. The name, street address, and telephone number of the person or entity responsible for managing, controlling, collecting rents for the chronic nuisance property of someone or some entity other than the owners, and upon the administrative hearing office, officers' final determination that a property is a chronic nuisance property, and until the designation is removed as provided herein, the city shall be entitled to include the property, the address and the parcel number, and the property title's owner on the list of chronic nuisance properties maintained by the city and available to the public. Such authorization shall mean to include publication of the list on a publicly accessible website maintained by the city. So in conclusion, this ordinance covers all properties. We're talking rentals, complexes, duplexes, homeowner-occupied parking lots, businesses, you name it, any property, doesn't matter who owns it, it's not out of state, not in state, it's any individual that's on the property taxes, any company that owns a building, any homeowner that owns it individually. They, if they fall in violation three times within this ordinance, they're supposed to be put on this registration. This has been in code since twenty sixteen. This ordinance gives the city the ability to do whatever it wants when it comes to registration for nuisance properties. It just needs to be implemented and monitored. Previous discussions, you guys had talked about a committee. A good committee oversight over this ordinance would be great. Monthly checkups, making sure that these nuisance properties that fall under any type of property owner gets put on it, followed through, all the way to the extent of getting rid of the problem. With that, thank you, guys, for allowing me to do this presentation. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer.
Looks like we have a couple of questions here, Nash. So Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Nash, thank you for being here this evening. And, you know, last week, I want to thank Alderman Hanauer, he mentioned something about this ordinance. And it's funny how we were presented with a significant number of ordinances. I couldn't remember the specific details of what we passed back in twenty sixteen. So your summary this evening, Nash, is very helpful. I did take an opportunity to print out the ordinance so that, I always like seeing the original ordinance because we underline the, you know, the new text and looking at it, it shows how it interdisperses with the existing city code. And, you know, the gist of it is that, the way I read it is that, you know, it, we provided, we provided our administrative judge and administrative process an opportunity to have a progressive penalty system that goes after bad actors. It's really that simple. And due process was a significant part of that discussion. And by looking, you know, rereading it, I remembered some of that. And, you know, one of the things that I'd like to, I'd like to have, and the departments involved probably aren't prepared to do this this evening, since, I don't even know if they knew we were coming, but before I get into that, I did want to say one thing. I really appreciate the conversation last week we had as a group about this topic, because it, I think, showed that we're all extremely interested in making sure that, you know, our city is in the best shape possible, that we're going after bad actors, that we hold their feet to the fire, and most importantly, we get the problems remedied. But I'd like, what I'd like from the, and I guess it's the legal department and Public Works, what I like is, I like a summary of how many have been put on the list over, since this is, was enacted back in twenty sixteen, what has been done with those who have been put on the list, and what we've been doing to enforce the ordinance that was, again, put in place back in twenty sixteen. And that would give, I think, us, and myself as well, an understanding of if we need to make any changes. Because I remember this, I think your group, Nash, may not have even been in favor of this entire ordinance back in, back in the day in twenty sixteen. And it was, you know, it was something that I know was near and dear to some of the neighborhood associations, and of course, people on the council. And, you know, it, it, it makes sense what we did. But I think before we start talking about, at least before I start talking about changes, or potential changes, or fines, or ways to make the process better, or having discussions with the administrative judge, I like to hear from our departments a report of what we've been doing about it, and if they think it's working, and we just haven't had an opportunity to ask that. But again, if these ordinances weren't brought up, and we didn't have that discussion last week, we might not be having this discussion. So thanks for being here tonight. And I guess that's, my question's more of the department to get us some information in the future. Mayor, if you could work with them, I would greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I did see Corporation Counsel Murdoch making notes.
There you go. Welcome, welcome to your first council meeting.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that, and I appreciate you coming and, you know, talking about the nuisance. And I think one of the issues that we, we see a lot is every year, it seems like things reset. So like, grass, you know, we have some developers, some owners that will not cut the grass until the city cites them. And then they go to the administrative court and show, I've cut the grass, and it gets wiped out. Well, what I think we ought to do is give them one chance to do it. And then, and I, this may have it, but I think we need to reset it to, to a two- or three-year process to where they get one, one time where it goes away, and then the rest of the time, the next year, at that first cut, if we have to let them know, if we go out there, we should be fining them, whatever the fee is, and as it, as it progressively goes up, you know, as we have to continue to go out there. And that fee should not be able to be taken off by the administrative court judge, because we've warned them. They know what the rules are. Now, I'm, I'm specifically talking about grass for right now. And I think what happens now is that every year, beginning of the year, it's kind of, once grass season's over, it resets. So they come before the administrative judge, and I'll bet you the administrative judge has got a lot of them coming before him right now. And they show a picture, hey, I've cut it, and then they let, let them go. It's what I think, I believe, happens. And if I'm wrong, I apologize. But one of the things we might want to tweak on this is to cross it over multiple years. And, and that way, when developer or homeowner that's constantly doing this, they don't get a warning after the first year. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think, and we'll have the Corporation Counsel, I think they get seven legal days to do it. And part of the problem is, is in those seven legal days for grass, they often get it cut and, and, you know, send in the picture to our inspectors, and then the fine is clear. But, you know, as a representative of a ward that really has the most of these problems, you know, along with that information that Alderman Donlin asked for, we, we have passed two other ordinances to try to get a handle on properties and fly dump. And then one of them, you mentioned, was gonna be a part of your presentation, which was our vacant housing registry. We lowered that down from three years to one year. We gave a little wiggle room for those who have made significant progress, as we don't want to take these homes. The city doesn't want them. That's part of the problem. So with that, you know, I would like to also, Mr. Fuchs, as you can, if we can get some information on how many times we've used that, as well as, we passed a dump ticket receipt. Because what, what happens a lot of the times is, we may have a residence or something with ungarnly amounts of debris and da-da-da that we go cite, and, and they may remove it. But a lot of times, it just goes to the next alley or, or some other place that's dumping. So I sponsored a ordinance that was a dump ticket ordinance. And, and that was for when we had these, these large situations that, before we cleared it in that seven days, they would have to prove to us that they went to the dump and dumped it the correct way. And I, and I don't think that's been used very much, and I think that that will help us out as well. Because that, that is much of the game that goes on as well. So I appreciate this information on the chronic nuisances. You know, part of the, part of the, the problem is, is, you know, a lot of times, people get to administrative court, and, you know, they, they make a case for, for, for the things that they have done, or that they're trying to get to versus money, da-da-da. And sometimes the judge grants extension. And then, you know, the house just keeps sitting and sitting. You know, we, we've got houses six and seven years. We say this ordinance is twenty sixteen, so that's definitely troubling as, as we're in twenty twenty-three. And, you know, we still have hundreds of houses and lots, you know. In, in my ward alone, I was just looking at the map, and it's very, very troubling. So I appreciate this information, and your time, you guys are always good to talk to. And I agree, we do have some good ordinances on the book, and we do need to enforce them. You know, and, and if that's what we're gonna do, I'm all for it. And if not, if these things don't work, then we, then we need to look at them and, and try to strengthen some things up. So I appreciate you.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for coming, and thank you for sharing, you know, information on this, this ordinance. I do want you to understand that we're here because we're trying to bring, I'm trying to bring my ordinance that I'm sponsoring out. But I want you to know I'm willing to listen and willing to learn and amend and make changes or whatever. So this is good. But it's not like we just decided last week to talk about this. And it, you know, we're going through a process of trying to, to pass an ordinance to fix some of these problems. My, I think it's a decent piece of legislation, this ordinance, the nuisance ordinance, but it doesn't go far enough or fix the things that I deal with. This is why we are gonna have to do something as a council. This ordinance doesn't talk a lot about communication with the owner or the property owner. It also uses the word property a whole lot, and it's built around the word property. But the people I'm dealing with are not the property owner, they're tenants. And, and it gets a little more complex. So it ain't so much black and white as it appears. And I'll just give you one short example. So I have a home in a subdivision where the owner gets a divorce, and then he disappears. The pool is still full. I get calls, Alderman, the geese or slime, whatever they are, are in the backyard, the grass is overgrown, and mosquitoes, and on and on and on. And then I get told by council, you know, you guys can't just go in there. You know, I mean, that's somebody's property. We just can't go back there and cut the grass. We, we can't treat the pool, we can't even cover the pool. So then I call Public Health. There are issues that happen with buildings on the east side, with, with housing on the east side. We know some of these situations are gonna happen again next summer, and then next summer, and then next summer. I want something in place that we automatically cut those lots. We've been knowing about these lots for years. We, we don't need to wait for them to get so ugly and so long. Just, let's just maintain them until they're sold or whatever. We also know we have the issue of township lots, county lots, that we don't even govern, but they're mixed in the city to the point that your neighbors or the people who use the city, they look at that situation and say, well, God, Springfield's not doing their job. But they are not knowledgeable enough to know that those are not Springfield lots, and we don't, we're not over those. And I, I have several of those in Ward Three. So all I want you to know is, I appreciate you coming and sharing this information. I think it is a lot of good information, but the type of ordinance I'm trying to produce and come out of what I'm trying to do addresses a lot, a lot deeper than this. The repetitiveness, kind of like what Alderman Hanauer is starting all over, maybe we need to go on to the summer automatically knowing those trouble spots. We know some of them are on file with the treasures office. They're at all different levels within our so-called policy. I'm not blaming our city employees. I just think it's bad policy right now to include this ordinance, because it doesn't address the things that you're gonna hear some of the citizens eventually come up and talk about. And it's not like the Aldermen don't try to do anything about them. It's just that, the big key here is, there's not a lot about communication. So we have a name and an address, but if that name, address, phone number is no good, or that manager is saying, I can't get ahold of them, we're, even judges are stuck. So I just want you to know, this is, this is nice, but this is not the answer that, that I'm looking for. But I appreciate you sharing with us. Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation, for being here. My question is, is when we turn in a complaint, what's the process of the follow-up? Because it's been a couple weeks, three weeks, and I haven't heard anything on a couple problem properties. And so, how do I know if inspectors have been there, or what's being done? Have they, have they been notified? Have they contacted these people? And, and again, this may not be the time to, to talk about that, but that's just some of the concern. And, and again, if you, you write them a citation, do they appear within the thirty days, you know, and before the, before the court? You know, they get a citation, they can mow it the next day, and does it, does the inspector automatically go out and, and check this property again? I know we're, I think we have five inspectors, inspectors on the books. I mean, to cover the city, that's a, that's a big undertaking. So, I mean, staff-wise, I mean, we, we want to do a lot of things, but, you know, we gotta take into consideration that, are we understaffed? Do we, you know, what, what's, what's the process? You know, what's a follow-up process? What's, how do I know if anything's being done? Because the, the grass is still tall, the, the garbage is still there, so I don't know what's, you know, if anybody's been out there. Do I call downtown? I mean, that's, that's my question and concern.
Alderman, do you want Director Fuchs to come up?
No, I think I, I talked to the director last week, and, and, you know, and I'll, and I'll contact him again. But just, just food for thought. I mean, it just, and again, the communication process, you know.
That's why we need zone managers.
Well, we talked about that, too. So, I think it would help. The zone managers would be a great, great asset. I think, you know, you hold somebody, well, not hold a accountable, but you have some, a go-to person.
And then they'll communicate with you.
Amen. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, we've hit some good points. And, and one of the things that Alderman Hanauer was talking about is the one-and-done type of thing. I think a more progressive type of discipline would be better. And, you know, we can't, if, if there's a person that, that don't cut their grass, and all of a sudden, they've made another mistake, and it's not a habitual type of person, maybe we ought to, maybe we ought to give them a little bit more time. I, I'm all for it, because I know that the problem with this whole ordinance and all the ordinances that we passed is there's no enforcement. They, they get to that certain point. And like you said, when the, when the year turns over, then they start over again. That shouldn't be. There should, they should be on the books as, for two or three years. And I think we argued this point when we brought this into, into play in, in two thousand sixteen, that we need to have it go more than just one year. And I think we got outvoted on that, but I think the votes might be here now.
Alderman Donlin?
Not that I'm counting.
You removed yourself. Alderwoman Natriano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not sure who, I guess this might be directed to the clerk. So the list of unsafe properties, is that the list? No, it's not the same list. So we don't have this list currently that's called for in this ordinance?
So under Public Works, they show three different types of registrations. They show one for buildings, for unsafe buildings. They show one for properties you're not allowed to live in. And then another, another one for destructive properties. They don't, there's not one that really covers this, even though there's an ability to have one for all the properties, all, you know, any, anything, a parking lot could be on it. Your house could be on it if I went and took pictures of you not cutting your grass. So it's all just based on implementation. And it's, there's a new administration, and, you know, we have to see where it goes from there. But this being on the books for seven years, I mean, sure, some things could be changed to it. Updates, it has been seven years. But I think the biggest part is implementation. As Alderman Redpath said, that's, that's the key thing, is we need enforcement. So the way to do that, I guess that's up to you guys, best way to find that. We're always here to be a source, so.
Sure. Yeah, I would say the website that we have for unsafe buildings and the demo list, it isn't really clear, at least to me, looking at it on my phone, that it tells you what is going on with the property. So I would say, if we did use this as a jumping off point, we would have to add information there.
Now, the information is different if you look at it on a laptop and you look at it on a phone. You do lose a lot of that integrity from a phone. But the administrative court files are out there.
Okay, perfect.
Any more questions, Alderwoman? Okay. Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, I, I like this discussion. I think it shows that we're, we're all interested in making sure that, you know, we have the best rules in place, and they're following, we clean up the city. But I think it's extremely important for us to hear, you know, we've alluded to the fact that, well, what we have on the books is working, what we have
on the books is working, what we have on the books isn't working. I think it's clear that we have problems in the city still, uh, but I want to have a better understanding again from the departments. What have we been doing to uh implement this ordinance the last seven years? And if we find out that no property's been added to the list, obviously, we need to start following our ordinance. If we find out properties and and owners have been on the list and they've been fined and and these properties haven't been cleaned up, then we need to retool it and obviously do something to make it stronger and more effective. So um I just encourage us to, you know, uh, I I like that idea of the non-reset. But one of the things that was discussed back when we brought this up originally also was the importance of the due due process. Uh, and that's by state statute and I'm sure other laws and rules uh to the property owners. Uh, sometimes maybe somebody, as an example, maybe somebody's in the hospital and they can't mow their yard because they've been in the hospital. And they get the citation and, you know, the the son or daughter stops by the house and sees it and, oh, my gosh, we better. Uh, but your question, Alderman Rockford, is a great one about how do we as elected officials, you know, keep track and get updates? Because you want to convey that information to the person that turned in the complaint. And it's a combination of things, and your question is spot on because I think it'd make it make us all more effective. I, you know, I I find it helpful just to, I always say to my constituent when they call it a complaint, make sure you nudge me in a couple of weeks. Because the process, and I'm oversimplifying it, ba- basically is, let's use the grass one as an example. If an inspector goes out and finds there is a violation, they then get through the due process that the owners and are afforded by law, they get a letter that cites them. And they're given so many days. I think it's fourteen, but I could be wrong, whatever they, whatever that number is. Then the inspector goes back out and if it's not remedied, then it goes to administrative court. And we changed it at the, we changed it just a few years ago. It used to be if someone came in the day of administrative court and had a picture or proof that they've remedied whatever the problem it was, it all went away. We made it stronger that if it got to that administrative court process, in other words, as you alluded to, Alderman Rockford, that, you know, the staff have been out now twice at least and saw that there was a problem on a piece of property, that the fine or a fine sticks. And then, you know, it needs to be remedied or there could be escalating fines. So I think we got a lot of strong teeth in our ordinance. It'd be helpful for even for me, there's, I've been around a while, to have sort of a refresher from the departments on, you know, what the process is. That I think that would be good, but also what we've been doing to implement this ordinance. And then if we need to change things, let's do it and make it better. So that's all I have.
Alderman, we can have the Public Works Department and the Legal Department prepare a presentation for you.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
And and I think that also, if I if I recall, also what we did was, okay, you got seven days to cut it first time. And I think as as if we kept getting repeat offenders, the the chance to cut it was would drop, would narrow. And then the inspector would have to go back out. I I I think that was part of part of our overall, uh, as I recall. Um, I mean, honestly, um, you know, and it's something that we dealt with for, you know, but and and we we can all come together. We can have the best ordinance around. If it doesn't get enforced, then then it doesn't matter. Um, the idea is it it's got to be enforced and and ultimately not to throw throw it at you, Mayor, but it's 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 under, it's it's up to the administration to enforce the the rules that we have in place, the the statute that we have in place. And and uh, you know, I feel like that our administrative judges have have been kind of lenient on this stuff. And it it in in a way, it kind of comes back at us because we're the ones that take the heat on it, you know, quite a bit. So, you know, I don't care what we put together, I, you know, let's try, let's try enforcing what we have first and then and then seeing what, you know, give it some time. I mean, you've you've been in it a whole how long?
This is my second council meeting.
Second council meeting, so it's got a little bit to go, but um, you know, I think that that would be be a wise decision to, let's see, let's let's get, you know, your your administration to start enforcing it and let's go from there.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, and just to follow up to uh Alderman Donlin, you know, when when the constituents that have called and complained in uh, they called back and they called tonight, texted me, have you heard anything on the properties? Nothing's being done. I don't have an answer. I don't know if anybody, anybody's been out. I don't know what's what's going on. And again, and it it boils down to head count, you know, I mean, uh, we did these, do these inspectors know where they've been three weeks ago, two weeks ago? I know they got notes and, you know, how many, how many problem properties are there, you know, in the city? So are they overloaded? You know, so again, going back to the the zone managers, you could go to one person and or meet with the the Public Works Department and say, hey, weekly or monthly or whatever to to kind of follow up, just food for thought, you know, in the future. So that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh, yeah, I have a request for Director Fuchs, if you would. Um, if you would please for me, um, I I know I have been doing an extensive reading on this and that Joliet, Illinois, on January the ninth, you know, they implemented their um landlord registry. But in particular, if you would look at not not just the registry, but look at the enforcement piece there in in two places. There's a lot of places doing this, but Joliet and then Peoria. If you would just take a glance at those two uh and see where uh maybe some of those ideals, maybe not all of it, but some pieces of it, especially about enforcement, fit Springfield or, you know, and things like that. Uh, Mayor, thank you for the the zone manager uh suggestion because it's just showing that um at least we're going to do something, you know. So I appreciate you if you would do that.
A review of both Joliet and Peoria.
Yes.
Landlord registration.
Yes. I I know Joliet is brand new. It just started January the ninth, only a few months, but Peoria, uh, it looked like they had been doing it for a while, but they have some pretty uh other ideals I haven't heard in here tonight uh dealing with red enforcement. And we're all the same state, so maybe we can uh take some of their stuff. I don't know. We'll see.
Glad to take a look at it for you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one thing I will say, too, for all of our new council members, I have learned to, at the end of every, one of my neighborhood presidents is in the audience right now, after every email where there's been a complaint, I always say we will greatly appreciate a status update. And it has helped me out because when I have them on the email, it's transparent and they know also what's going on, too. Um, I know one thing I've learned, too, uh, two years ago was that when we did our ward meetings, the process would explain how many days it takes. If there's like five or six calls, it's twenty-four to seventy-two hours before you may see an inspector get out of there, get out there due to us only having five. Then after that, just what the process is. So I think if we have a little demonstration of that, that would help some of our new council members and just to maybe do that follow-up and ask them for a status update, too. Because you won't really hear from the actual inspectors. It would be Director Fuchs that we would hear from or our arborist Jeff that we would hear from that gives us a status update. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Noatriano.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to add to Alderwoman Purchase. That's a really good point. And I think it would be helpful if we had that information on the website so um our constituents can see uh what the process is, um, because maybe they don't have a problem neighbor, but one day they do and they go to the website and they want to know how things work.
All right. Oh, what, Alderman Rockford, you snuck in there.
Yeah, just last, just follow-up. I I understand how, you know, I don't understand, but I do understand how it works. But my my concern is I I don't know when the when the inspector has gone out. So I know it's supposed to be between twenty-four and seventy-two hours. That doesn't, that doesn't tell me anything. I don't, I didn't get say a uh email back whether whether anybody's on my email with me. You know, I I've I've had a dozen people tell me, I I don't want to give you my name because I don't want, you know, retaliation.
Right.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't do me any good, you know. Uh, I didn't, and then I say, did you have you filed a complaint with the city yourself? And the answer is no. So I I understand uh that it's twenty-four to seventy-two hours, but how do I know they've been out there? So that's, you know, and this, and we'll, and we'll work it out in the future. I'm just, you know, again, it's out there for talk and then for thought. So, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, sneaking at the very end. Um, I just want to make sure uh for your director's report, when we get information on um the the implementation of this ordinance, um Alderman Gregory's ordinance that he mentioned uh with the the tipping evidence, you know, to show that that um someone's taken, you know, not just grass clippings, but when you've got the the furniture, the couches, the whatever, the debris in the in the on the property. I'd like, I'd like to make sure that we get um a report of how many of those um those cases have been filed since that ordinance has been adopted. Because that was, excuse me, that was a really good ordinance. Um, I I think fly dumping exists throughout the city. And and I think Alderman Gregory made a very good point that that's, that's not the only place it comes from. But we do know that this stuff moves from, you know, one block to another. So if we could get a report on on the status of of that ordinance also, I'd appreciate it.
I saw Director Fuchs writing and I saw Corporate Counsel Mordock writing, so I think they got it.
I think we're gonna get um both of them, much bigger notebooks for their next meeting.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Yes, congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Aldenett, for your presentation.
Thank you, Nash.
Thank you.
Uh, the chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting and approve the minutes. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of the council meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
First, um, this motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have to vote.
Take a vote.
You're gonna vote, vote. Okay. And the motion passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Agendas numbers twenty twenty-two, three eighty-four, twenty twenty-three, zero eight-six, twenty twenty-three, one twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, one seventy-three, twenty twenty-three, two oh-one, twenty twenty-three, two oh-two, and twenty twenty-three, two oh-three remain tabled or in committee. Does anyone have any action on any of these?
I'm just playing.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three, two twenty-four, an ordinance approving the appointment of Dave Fuchs as Director for the Office of Public Works. The chair will entertain a motion to place the agenda number twenty twenty-three, two twenty-four on final passage.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, uh.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Williams, it's okay, I see.
Somebody, um, I was just trying to see the fiscal impacts on all appointments, not just this one particular one. Uh, so when they came in, did they all come in just replacing the old staff with the same salaries and, you know, just that's why it says blank on the the impact for fiscal?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Should say yes, not yet. Sorry, Alderman. Okay, so I guess we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please vote yes.
Does he still want it?
Well, he's behind you. You can ask him.
After what we've been telling him to do?
All those vote yes and all those opposed vote no. Voting is now over. We'll get him a new pen, too, to go with that notebook.
My um computer is sticking, but yes.
You gotta double click.
All right, so that's.
Double click.
Ten voting yes, none voting no. The motion carries.
Congratulations, David.
You're in the hot seat now, Dave. The next item, the next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three, two twenty-five, an ordinance approving the appointment of Edward P. Canny as the Fire Chief of the Springfield Fire Department. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three, two twenty-five on final passage.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Okay, the motion carries. That's ten voting yes. I'm gonna give us a pause in the agenda. And can I ask my new fire chief, Chief Ed Canny, please come up and his wife Gina? Chief, would you like to say a few words at all?
I wanted to say thank you first to all the aldermen and women that are here and thank you for instilling your trust in me. Um, I would also like permission to have a few minutes to have my wife and children pin me. Uh, the fire department is full of traditions and one of those traditions is a ceremonial pinning. Um, it all goes back to the beginning of of time. Uh, and I won't bore you with the history, less is more, right? So um, if if I could have two minutes for my wife and children to.
Is everyone okay for us to have a pinning ceremony right now?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Chief wanted you all to be a part of it. He's your chief, too, so.
Hold up a minute. Well, we'll get up.
Up, boys.
Hold up, guys.
They want all your uh.
Come on, get up there.
DCs and S to come up. Division chiefs, they want you to come up. They want the division chiefs up here. Congratulations, Chief.
Chief Mayor, I I forgot to include you, but thank you as well.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, pardon, oh, we didn't, yeah, they voted. Ten voted yes, none voted no. I waited before I brought him up here. That would have been bad, pinning before they voted. Uh, the next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash two twenty-six, an ordinance approving the appointment of Ethan Posey as the Director of the Office of Community Relations. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three, two twenty-six on final passage.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Conley, you're fine.
If we could, we, um, uh, Mr. Posey didn't get a chance to introduce himself on Tuesday. He's got.
Ethan, can you come up, please?
I know he's a little shy and retiring, so.
He's a very shy individual.
A true extrovert. Even though he's an Arsenal fan, we'll still listen to him.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to reintroduce myself. My name is Ethan Posey. I am the Director of Community Relations here in the city. I want to thank you all for giving me a moment to step out last week. Had a family emergency. Family is very important to me, so I wanted to thank you all for that. I know that I am new to the community and being the Director of Community Relations is very important that I build the relationships with you all and with every member of the community here in Springfield. I want you all to know that I do not expect that trust to be given and that I will work every day to the best of my ability to earn that trust and do the best for this community. I have a blended family with a beautiful wife, three beautiful children, and one on the way. Springfield is my home and I want this community to be as amazing as it can possibly be so I can watch them grow and flourish. Thank you.
And Mr. Posey has already been working with Chief Scarlett and Chief Canny for recruitment. So you'll all be very proud, including James Johnson in the back. So all those that want Mr. Posey as your Community Relations Director, please vote yes. If you're opposed.
I'm clicking fifteen times so my guy can come on.
And Ethan, you are approved. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Congratulations.
I just want to point out, we did not applaud for the new director of Public Works.
I guess we need to call Director Fuchs up here because Dave, you didn't, you didn't get applause, Dave, so you gotta come up.
Thank you, Navance.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is number two twenty-three dash two seventy-three, an ordinance authorizing an inter-fund advance from the Self-Insurance Fund for the purpose of paying a judgment payment, including costs and interest in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents to Canowski Berinsky for Illinois Circuit Court Case two zero zero eight dash L dash one seven six, Mary Yarborough individually and as a special administrator of the estate of Eric M. Jones versus C W L P and the City of Springfield with the reimbursement from the water fund in monthly installments over the next sixty months for emergency passage.
So move.
The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two twenty-three dash two seventy-three on emergency passage.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this ordinance? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. And bear with me, this is my very first vote. And that's eleven voting yes, none voting no. Thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is two twenty-three dash two seven four, an ordinance authorizing payment for a one-year contract between the city and Fussis Inc. for a video and data collection collaboration platform for an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through the use of grant funds for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Ms. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
I, I, I would like, I know this is on emergency passes. I imagine it has a deadline on funding for this grant, but I, I am concerned with some of our citizens as well. I did reach out to the ACLU President, Ken Page, on, just for public safety and, and, you know, they, they have really, you know, a ordinance like this where, where we're going to, you know, be able to livestream things through our police cameras as well as other devices throughout our city is a serious matter. And I think the public needs to have more time to weigh in on this particular ordinance before we put it through and implement such, such a technology into, into our city police.
Chief Scarlett is here. Do you mind if he discusses this with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderman.
Well, good evening, everyone. To your point, Alderman Gregory, yes, we are up against the clock as it pertains to grant funds we received from the State of Illinois. This was grant funding from the State Attorney General's Office to coincide with organized retail theft crime grant funding. And essentially what FUSIS is, is it a platform that's, we call it Real-Time Crime Data Center. It's actually in the squad cars. And essentially it does a bunch of different things. Essentially, on our screen, the officer's computer screens, it overlays all the platforms that we already have. So it overlays our computer aided dispatch, it overlays our license plate reader technology, our ShotSpotter technology, and current city cameras that we already have access to. Basically what it does is when our officers are responding to a high priority call, it puts all those technological pieces that we already have into one platform to allow for a more rapid response from the officer, a safer response for our team responding, and an efficient response. So we're not necessarily livestreaming cameras all the time. Now, what we do, what we'll do is ask for people to participate by allowing us access to their cameras, whether that be the school district. If we had an active shooter, it'd be great to have those cameras livestreaming, whether it be someone from the neighborhood, stores or whatnot. But that's all permission based. That's up to the owners of the cameras, whether they choose to share that with the police department.
Yes, I, I totally respect that. I've, I've been a strong supporter of the tools that we need to keep our city safe. And I haven't, I'm, I'm not one way or another on this, but I, I am concerned with others on others' privacy. If we do have to livestream something or, or tapping into someone's cameras, for whatever reason, I think others are concerned about their, their privacy and, and what would may be picked up.
Yeah, and just to be clear, there is no tapping into anyone's cameras. If, if I'm looking at your camera, you gave me permission to look at it. That's the only way that happens.
So in that event, if, if my neighbor gives SPD permission to tap into their cameras, then, then, then my privacy may be crossed over. I think that's some of the concern from, from, from the community, you know. And, and that's why I, I really think, you know, I know we're up against a time crunch, and, and, and I get it, and everybody can vote how they want, but I'm hesitant to vote for it without having all of the knowledge and all the facts and giving people of this community time to chime in on it, on those things. So I appreciate you.
Yeah, we can certainly, if you and I would like to have a discussion in the upcoming week about it, that's great. I, I will say again, this is about protecting our officers when they respond to calls. This is about keeping our community safe, and this is just another tool in the toolbox that I think is very important for our agency moving forward.
And Chief, can you explain why it's on emergency passes?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, this was a grant through the State of Illinois Attorney General's Office. Their, their funding, again, lapses at June 30th, is the end of their fiscal year, so this grant will not be extended. So we have a one-time opportunity to use funds to purchase items related to the, the organized retail theft grant funding. So that's where, why it's on emergency passage.
Alderman Gregory, do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
So Chief, when did we get this grant?
I'm not sure. I would ask maybe Deputy Chief Stunkel. He's the subject matter expert on it. He may have a few more details to share as far as when it came in.
We were only just recently made aware of the grant, I believe, March or April, that the grant was even available.
Okay. And, and so, my, my, what you call, Ring Camera, okay, so the ones that have signed up and had their Ring Cameras already in the program, they've already given you permission, but are you going to, see what's bothering me is the livestream part. So are you going to go back and let them know that, 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 you know, we got this new whatever's going on and it's livestreaming or whatever? And, and give them an opportunity to maybe say, yeah, you can keep using the images from my ring, or no, I don't wanna participate now. Are they gonna have a.
We don't currently have that capability. We don't have the capability to view anyone's Ring Camera at this time, or any other private camera. What we have is registry. So the people that have cooperated so far have let us know, hey, I have a camera. That way, if there is an event, we come to them and say, did something happen, you know, this occurred in your neighborhood, can you provide us the footage?
Okay.
So this would be something new they would have to opt into. They would obtain a device that would attach to their cameras.
Okay, so you will. So, so they will be getting asked about this new piece?
It will become available. We're working on some funding to pay for those devices that have to attach to the cameras in order to make that possible.
Thank you. That, that kinda answered. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. So just to be clear, you're not purchasing additional cameras at this time? This, this doesn't allow you, I mean, and I know you don't already access Ring Cameras. And Deputy Chief, you can probably clarify. Sorry, Chief. I mean, you, you bring a subject matter expert up, we'll just let him take all the heat for you. But just to clarify, when you, when you're talking about buying new devices to, to be able to coordinate, are you talking about buying new devices that you're gonna be offering to residents with their Ring doorbells? Or are you looking at, you know, like with the, the school district and the cameras that they have with a larger setting? What, what sort of future plans?
Current funding allows for so many of those devices, and each, I forget what they refer to their little hub as, supports so many cameras. And so obviously, we'll put the city cameras on it first. We've had discussions with some school district members about the future possibility of using them. We've also requested additional funding to buy more of those devices. But there's a potential that if we aren't able to come up with that funding or pay for it, that the businesses or citizens could buy that piece of equipment themselves. And then we would have, it would have this access.
But you're not really envisioning a large push out to people with Ring doorbells, is that correct, or are you asking?
Depending on how much funding we can get to buy the items, I, I picture it more with commercial cameras. You know, where you have more than one camera typically, businesses that are on major routes, or in areas where crime maybe.
There's already high crime rates and you wanna be more aware?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. So the motion passes with nine voting yes and two voting present. Is that alright, refreshing counsel? Alright. The next item on the agenda is item number 220, 2023-275. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a no-cost extension of Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority IG, ICJIA Grant Number 823106 for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, which was authorized in ordinance 079-02-23 in the amount of $270,000 for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this ordinance?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. This, this is a, and, and Chief, if you guys wanna come up real quick so I can ask two questions at once on, on these next two ordinances, so I don't have to keep having you guys come up. But I, I, I know this was, Madam Mayor, we had a large discussion in election time about grant funds, and, and, and there was a mass miscommunication. And along with this was this $270,000, which is a grant that we helped prepare for an organization called The Outlet. And there's also, so this next $3 million, 3.1 million, I understand is a co-responder grant, correct?
On homelessness, that's correct.
On homelessness, correct. So, so we have one more $3 million allocation from Senator Turner that is gonna expire just like these as, as well, correct?
Yeah, we're in the process. We haven't even been awarded that one yet. That's gonna come to council to actually accept the award whenever the paperwork's done. The state has not even completed the paperwork on that.
Well, we have to put that on emergency passage as well to beat the deadline.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, if the state doesn't get the paperwork done until after June 30th, then hopefully they'll, that'll all be part of the, the extension package. But yes, that one could be coming as well.
I'm not, I'm not against this, cuz I know some of the merits and things that we will be doing with this. But I'm highly concerned that this is geared towards just a short number of kids, and, and not really a greater portion of our community. They do a good job with it. But there's some other organizations that we've been working with for some time, and, and, and things like this, when we do this, it, it often puts our community at odds against each other. As we're playing, you know, picking the winners and, and losers, so to speak. So I want, I wanna make sure that, you know, you know, if I, if I need to, you know, write Senator Turner or give her a buzz, and to try to help us get that from the state. Cuz it would, it would be such a shame to lose out on $3 million in crime prevention money. You know, a, as you see and as you know, things are starting to heat up out in our community, and we've had some good conversations. So I don't have a problem with this, but, you know, it, it's really not helping us get to the, to the root of the problem, you know. Great organization, got great people that work for it, but I'm looking for something from, 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 from the community in which we represent. There's certainly kids that go there. I stay close to the facility, so I definitely see action. I'm, I'm not saying that. But, but I, we're, we're missing something in our community. We're missing some groups that can really help us move forth.
If I could just shed some light on, on the first one here, the Focus Attorneys related grants. Y'all, the majority of you are familiar with the Focus Attorneys program, and we kind of revamped that to where we are identifying troubled youth. District 186 is helping us identify individuals within their school district that are troubled youth, that are on the path really for a troubled rest of their life. And so by identifying those individuals, providing them with mentorship, whether that be through the police department or through The Outlet, the goal is that we give them the structure to have a successful life. So I think the majority of these kids are likely from areas that we see of gang and gun violence within our community. So I think it has the opportunity to make a huge impact upon our city. I think it potentially will. In my opinion, if we save one, one young child from going down the wrong path, then we are successful, and that's certainly what our goal is. And regarding the, the money from Senator Turner, I, I think that will definitely come through. And I'll, I'll be sure to push, as will the Mayor. I know we've had previous discussions on that. And if you'd like to make phone calls as well, I think it's just a matter of the paperwork process at this point. But there was a lot of money in that, and the Mayor and I actually talked about that today on some projects and ideas on, again, on how we can, you know, apply that to, towards the community as far as, you know, young people and structured organizations. And I've been dealing with Andre, referenced the boxing program now, so.
Absolutely. I, I don't doubt that you, you've been doing those things. I just wanted to ask a few questions about this. So when we pass this, we'll, we'll, we'll get to rolling on our, on our Focus Attorneys program, and, and maybe we can have a, a presentation, a report, and, you know, sort of, sort of, get to know some of these mentors and things that are out in our community. I appreciate, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Williams.
In your discussions with the Senator, did she indicate any other way she envisioned seeing the money spent in Springfield?
Oh, absolutely. We had a conversation over the 3.1 million dollars about how she'd like to see that allocated. It was really broken up in two parts, violence prevention and community engagement, and, you know, with our youth and, and that sort of thing. So those were kind of the two avenues. I broke down, you know, I, I believe you guys had, had seen that, how, how the money would be allocated and spent. And that was signed off by, by each of you in the previous administration and Senator Turner as well.
And that hasn't changed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Alderman Domlin.
Yeah, just, I, I echo those concerns. I think it's something that we wanna make sure, and please don't be offended by this, I'm not in the process of trying to manage the police department, but it can't be all about wanting to go in just for law, the law enforcement side, the community engagement part. And, and it sounds like you're sympathetic, and your ears have been open to those kind of things. It should, should be a part of this, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. And again, the Mayor and I had a conversation today, and I made it very clear that community engagement is a major component of law enforcement, building trust and confidence in our constituents and our citizens, and mentoring young children, and creating generational recruiting is very near and dear to my heart, and that's a major component of what we do. It's not just enforcing the law. And I think that being a well-rounded police organization is, is vital for this community, and that's what I'm committed to.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the motion passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-276. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a no-cost extension of Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority ICJIA Grant Number 102301 for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, which was authorized in ordinance 204-05-23 in the amount of $3,164,000 for the Springfield Police Department for emergency passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, the most, the voting is open. All those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. The motion passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 202-2023-277. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Grant Number 2725-40222 from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $1,200,000 for the purchase of 621 and 623 East Adams for $1,200,000 to repair the patron elevator and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,200,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for emergency passage.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just curious as to the way it reads, we're getting money to purchase some property. Okay, and do, so what is it for?
Interim Director Yezel is here to.
Awesome. And then also, if you have the information, any estimates of how much it's going to cost yearly to maintain the property and things like that? Who's gonna be responsible?
So first of all, for, for emergency passage, again, this is because of the, the State of Illinois. This was a, a grant that was given to us. We just got the contract. It was previously written, and this is from Senator Turner, again, for purchase of this property that's going to become the pharmacy, but not a pharmacy where you get drugs, but a pharmacy for art, the art. And we currently, just because of the way the grant was written, we already talked, I've already spoken with Corporation Counsel, and we will work towards how we're going to per, do this purchase, but we will not own it. It will be then, be, what do we call, signed, assigned.
Assigned, yes.
Yes, assigned to them once it's done. But we still have some things we need to work through. It's just the way in which it was written.
Alderwoman Conley.
Well, fortunately Alderwoman Notriano was faster to get her questions in and had the exact same ones I did, so thank you, Yezel. If it's the interim director, can we just say director? Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't been up here as official.
I know.
Welcome back.
This kinda feels like old home.
It's good to see you.
Alderman Williams.
Chief Mayor.
None? Okay, and just so you all know, because Corporation Counsel Mordock and Interim Director Yezel and I both had a discuss, all three of us had a discussion. This is just for the grant funding. This is not the purchase. That still has to come to you. This is just the grant. So you will still get more information coming, which will probably help. Any other discussion? Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. We're on to unfinished business, and I'm gonna be the first one, I know that you all can click in, to bring up unfinished business. Because I, there is a special guest in the audience that I would like to bring up to say hello to you, so Ms. Catherine Harris, would you please come forward? We have an interim director of the Lincoln Library. Her name is Catherine Harris. And I just wanted Catherine to introduce herself and say hello to all of you.
Hello, Director Harris.
Hello, Alderwoman Purchase. And hello to all of you. I am humbled and honored and challenged to have been asked to serve as the interim director of the library and with focus on the interim part. and with focus on the interim part. Because I am going to be laser focused on getting a permanent director for the public library, which is indeed a gem in our community. I come from the Presidential Library. That's where I worked for God knows how long. And when we hired our director, we had the opportunity to use the services of a search firm, which really helped streamline the process, got rid of the chaff, and made the process work very well. So I am going to be learning about how I go about requesting and implementing and getting all of this done. And I'm very pleased to be at the library. I found the staff there to be knowledgeable, friendly, inviting. They've been doing their jobs. They don't need me to tell them how to do it because they know how to do it. So I'm really just focused on getting a permanent director for our public library. And I thank you for the opportunity to do so. And I may be pulling some of you to give me some advice and guidance and answer questions and all of that. And I thank you very much.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for coming out of the dream that is retirement to help us with this. I will say, in fact, I told Mayor Boucher after she first announced that you were coming, I was like, I'm not entirely certain. We didn't all stand up and applaud that. It's really exciting. So I appreciate you bringing your expertise and your love of libraries into this job. I'm sure you know already, we have a community that really loves its library. It is one of those areas where I get a lot of contact from people. And people are very vested in seeing the library continue to thrive and grow. And so I just, again, I thank you for bringing your background, your experience, and your love of libraries and the engagement in the part that they play in the community. Because I think I'm excited to see who we get to lead the library. I think there's a lot of good work going there. And I know that you will launch us in a direction that will continue to grow and strengthen that. So thank you again.
Thank you so much for that.
Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for your work. Very nice to meet you. I would just like to say, I know, so I haven't even been in Springfield that long. But in the short time that I have been here, we've gone through a couple of directors. And if memory serves, it seems like maybe we did national searches for them too. So I would just say, if there's any way we could prioritize someone who already lives here or is somehow connected to the area, so we could get somebody in place who might stay a while.
That would be good.
Yeah, yeah. I think like Alderwoman Conley said, we have folks here who really love and depend on the library. And they certainly would like to see some continuity. And yeah, somebody to stick around. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor? I just want it to be known that I sincerely appreciate your desire to have the leader of the library have a master's degree in the field. I think that is very important, particularly for a city of our size.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
I just want to say hello and congratulations. You know, I know you'll do a great job. And I look forward to seeing what our search finds. And, you know, if anything you need from me, I'm always there for you.
I got your number.
And I just want to Director Harris, say thank you again. I'm honored that you would come and help us with our search for a library. And your expertise is the top echelon of the entire city of Springfield. So just thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other unfinished business to come before the council? Is there any new business to come before the council?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
I just want to always remind, last week we had just a grand old time down at the Levitt Amp series. It's every Thursday. It's just a wonderful, wonderful time. So I wanted to make sure that I did put that on our community's brain after a hot, long week of all of us working. Come out and enjoy yourself. And that's it. Thank you. If I could say one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I have met with all of your directors. And I will say that all of them are energetic. You know, I razzled them and put them to the test. And all of them responded very well. And I want to particularly call out Ms. Debbie, I think her in the blue because I was out one time and it was in my mood. But she came right onto me and introduced herself. And she wasn't afraid of it. So I told myself I would mention that, mention that. And but in all seriousness, you know, we get everybody's new. And we appreciate you guys taking on these great tasks. And, you know, we're going to be rolling. And, you know, always, always, always feel free to ask us to give you a few minutes because we'll do that. And I always, I told Mr. Fuchs, I apologize for so many emails, but sometimes I forget to send them when I can. So for me, if you get repetitive emails, you know, my apologies. But I do try to make sure that I send everything that comes across me and look into it. So far, so good. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Alderman Carlson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two quick things, a quick shout out to, you just walked out. Chief Scarlett, I've been working with two or three members of his team over the last month over a couple of issues in Ward 7. And his team was professional, took care of it quickly. And I know the residents are most appreciative. And the second thing, you know, coming off COVID, you know, I know the county, Sangamon County, got $30 million of COVID relief money. The city got 30. And maybe this is more of a question for budget and management. But, you know, our federal government just passed that debt relief package last week. And in there, I've been reading in my day job, they are looking to maybe claw back some of that pandemic money. So I don't know how much we have. But I think, you know, maybe we should just be aware of the situation, Mayor, that there have been some articles, there are some municipalities in the state of Illinois worried about maybe losing some money that has yet to be spent. So I don't know if that's a line of credit or we already, or did we already get that 30 million?
I can tell you as the treasurer, I received that money when I was the treasurer. So it's here.
Okay. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Budget Director Metzger, do you want to say anything? Or? Okay, she says no. Alderwoman Conley, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was also going to thank Chief Scarlett. He really did not want to stay around tonight. But just also thank everyone who came out to coffee with a cop yesterday in Ward 8 that was at Stella Coffee. And encourage people, as the police department holds these events throughout the city, please take the time to show up and meet the officers who are on our streets and keeping an eye on things. They're, we had a lot, we had a good show up from the police department. I had to get to work before I could see how many other people came. But it's, you know, as part of our community engagement, having our officers in the community. And, I mean, there's nothing more casual or fun than drinking coffee, at least in my opinion. So, again, thank you, thank you to all the officers who participated and to the chief too, for continuing these coffees.
Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to recognize some folks who live down south in Ward 6. Glenwood High School Girl Soccer Team is the 2023 Illinois State Champions in Class 2A. So congratulations to them.
And I graduated high school with their coach.
Oh, no kidding?
I do. Come in, Redpath.
She stole my thunder.
Well, before we get to citizens to address the council, my husband made me aware before I came over here today that earlier this week, an elected official that served at the county level passed away. Mary Ann Lamb, is that what you said? Mike, is that what you told me? Mary Ann Lamb had passed away. So I think we should have a moment of silence for her.
Yes, please.
Thank you, everyone. And Mary Ann Lamb was the county recorder for years and years and years, for those of you that don't know. All right, now we're on to citizens that signed up to address the council. First, we have Rosanna Polito. She was here. I saw her going in and out. Well, we'll go to the next one. And if she comes back in, I'll call her up. Tammy Bartalomucci. Is Tammy here? Alice Ramey, I know you're here. You signed up to speak.
I'm going to change my name.
Do you want to be Rosanna or Tammy? Which one?
Just not Tammy. No, 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 no.
Okay.
I have a complaint. Don't everybody swallow their coffee and forget to ask what it was? I do have a complaint. I believe a neighbor in our town came up here and asked them to come and look at her sidewalk, okay? He never did come out. So this weekend, she's going to burn it. She's going to burn it. And I mean, it's not going to be with a little lighter. It's going to be with one of those big ones.
She's going to burn the sidewalk?
She's going to burn the grass that grows up between her sidewalk and her curb. Because they will not come out and fix it. Because the people that put it in did not put the black strip in and make it sealed together like they're supposed to. You know, like doing your job like you're supposed to. You're getting paid for it, $14 an hour or whatever, okay? He did not do it, okay? Now, on the other thing about getting things done, it seems like I don't have a problem getting things done. Is it because I got a big mouth? Or do I just stay on them and give them courtesy to come? But I think everybody on this horseshoe is going to do a good job, even the new ones that have been elected. And also the ones that have been here. And Mayor, I think you're doing a beautiful job.
Thank you, Alice. I think Director Fokes, can I ask him to come up? I thought he told me he had talked to the woman with the sidewalk. I just want you to hear this.
If he did, she did not remember because she told me to talk about it today.
How could you forget him?
How can you forget David?
On your instruction, Mayor, I met with the lady in question right outside the door. And I know we put in the work order. If it wasn't done, you have my apologies. And I'll make sure that it is done.
Okay, because I know Dave talked to her.
Burn up, do you?
No, I don't want anybody, no, Chief, help me out here. We don't want anybody with fire anywhere on the sidewalk.
Well, she didn't see anybody come out. And I told her I would say something and not to get you in trouble. But I guess I got
Too late for that.
Like I did get you in trouble and me too. Because when he looked at me a certain way, I'm in trouble, okay? But I'm sorry.
I know the feeling. I know the feeling.
This is why no one applauded when you got appointed.
All right.
Okay.
All right, call that a vote.
Would you really take care of it? Because I hate to be standing out there with a post.
The clock's still running.
Pause that clock.
Yeah, they need to take this in the hallway.
You guys take that outside.
Five minutes are up.
Your time is up.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. I believe that Rosanna Polito came back into the audience, so I'll call her up now. You have a tough act to follow there, Rosanna.
Well, last week I was listening to the council roundup. And I heard that was mentioned out-of-state landlords. And where I live, we have an out-of-state landlord that I've contacted six times by letter, many phone calls. And I just want to say that it's a senior building, 55 and over, and disabled. It's called Serenity Matter, and it is anything but serene. We have doors and broken locks that management won't fix. And thus, we have problems of homeless people coming and sleeping in the building at night. The management has been totally unresponsive, both in Florida and locally. I've written at least six letters for the time I've been living there. And the local management is rude and dismissive. Many of us pay $1,000 a month or more to live there. And I've given you pictures of the lack of snow removal. It snowed. Three days later, you're looking at the pictures of what was there three days later. And let me tell you that the disabled part, there's a man in my building with one leg. His mother died during the three days of snow. He had to climb through what you're looking at. Also, I had to sign, I had no choice. I signed a non-smoking agreement. When we complain about the people smoking the building, we're treated rudely. And, you know, I'm thankful, I have my health. I can run down the stairs should there be a fire. There's not, I'm the youngster in the building. Many of the people there are 70 and 80 years old and disabled. They wouldn't be able to make it down the stairs. We are forced to endure one lock on our door. The management came by and made maintenance take off our door handles that had locks in them so we could double-lock our doors. It was forced upon us. We had, and, you know, in a time of economic downturn where unfortunately there's more theft, I guess because we're seniors, we can't live our own lives and pay $1,000 and have two locks on our doors. I would have 50 seniors here from the building with me. It's 150 units. But they are afraid of retribution. So they, a lot of them remain silent. And I'm hoping now with this new administration that has assumed the reins of leadership in Springfield, some of these matters can be revolved for my fellow seniors in the building, and we can feel safer. And I didn't plan on talking about this, but I want to say this because you mentioned the civility pledge. I've lived in Springfield for seven years. This is the third time I have come and addressed the council. Two other times that I was here, I was bullied by aldermen. So I hope that, to see the civility pledge go forward because I'm a taxpayer. And I should be able to come and voice my opinion and not be ridiculed for it. And I just have one more thing to say that I'm just a very honest person, down to earth. And sometimes it gets me in a lot of trouble. But I need to go forward because I'm here. I used to live in Ward 9, and I owned a home there. And unfortunately, I moved out because Ward 9, right by the National Guard, is overrun by groundhogs. Groundhogs eat your foundation, these hard-working Americans. My fellow Americans go and work. They buy homes. And now the groundhogs, that's why I got out. I could hear my foundation, you can hear it crumbling, you hear your house shifting. And I know people who live there today, it's no different. Groundhogs have overrun the place. And I asked a trapper, I said, he says it's $100 to put the trap up. And if a cat goes in, I still have to charge you. So I would hope that the city would take notice and do something about that. And when I heard about the fines going, I understand what you're saying. And yet, as far as I'm concerned, we're faced with the largest economic downturn. These seniors have built the country. They fought for the country. If you could somehow help them out, I'd appreciate it as a senior. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. And we can ask Chief Canny and Director Fokes, talk to you about where you live and the safety of it for the seniors.
Thank you.
Fire safety and then public works.
Alderman Donlin, what about getting rid of those groundhogs? You know Bill Murray?
All right, Polly Poskin also signed up to speak.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For the opportunity to speak. I'm Polly Poskin. I live
I live in Harvard Park and a proud resident of Harvard Park in Ward Two. So, I'm here to talk about Ordinance 203, Alderman Williams' ordinance, the landlord registry proposal. And not to go into any of the, kind of, the detail about that now, what I want to say, we as Icon, I'm a member of Icon, I'm the steering committee, we are ardent supporters in concept. The general concept of a landlord registry is one of our priorities. And many of the people around the horseshoe here weighed in on that on our survey, and there was very positive, very positive support for a landlord registry. So, that's one thing. One thing I'd like us to do, because it came up with the first person who presented, is that if we're gonna look at these ordinances and talk about whether we need any kind of new ordinance, whether we need to revise existing ordinances, whether we need to look at implementation and enforcement, we need to take all of these apples and oranges and bananas and pineapples apart. Let's just say the apple is the landlord registry. I mean, just to take, now, it is an entity in and of itself. Our position at Icon is, we would like to be engaged with anybody, elected official who wishes to be engaged on that topic, with SALA, with other landlord neighborhood associations that might exist, to talk about what it is that could reasonably be addressed. We don't want to be unreasonable. We want to go forward with how we, through maybe a landlord registry, could achieve, you know, better maintenance of the residential structures in our community, therefore improving our neighborhoods, therefore maintaining our property value, therefore welcoming anybody who wants to live in a neighborhood, be they tenants or be they homeowners. It is for the good of the city. It is not something to be frightened or fearful of. It's, it's to lift us all up. So, there's that about the registry. The other thing I want to say about, it started this evening with a definition or a discussion about the chronic nuisance ordinance. I want to provide some clarification. The chronic nuisance property, let, let me describe to you, per the law, what it says. A chronic nuisance property is property upon which either two or more of the following criminal activities have occurred during any sixty-day period of, you know, three or more of the following criminal activities during any three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day period as a result of separate factual events that have been independently investigated by a law enforcement agency. The chronic nuisance abatement ordinance has to do with criminal activity in a residence. What we're talking about with a landlord registry, and I think Alderman Gregory, you mentioned it about, you know, the kind of properties we have. Alderman Williams, you mentioned it about the kind of properties that we have. We're looking at the housing violations, the environmental violations that we want to address with a landlord registry. If we want to look at the chronic nuisance abatement ordinance, which I think we should, that's an orange. It is not an apple. If a landlord registry to look at housing violations, the conditions, the health, the safety, the maintenance of housing and property, those are housing violations. Those are our inspectors. They aren't law enforcement officials. Law enforcement officials get involved in chronic nuisance abatement. Okay? So, we got apples, we got oranges. The bananas may be our enforcement, implementation. So, we're gonna need to look at that. I mean, if we want to come up with some kind of comprehensive look at how we improve the housing stock and, and the neighborhood viability and the residential integrity of our community, we gotta take all these pieces apart to look at them. And I don't want people to confuse necessarily a landlord registry with the chronic nuisance abatement ordinance. They are interrelated. They may have some bridging that needs to be done. These are separate concepts in the law. You know, sorry, I suppose. Enforcement and implementation, those are budgetary issues, those are employment issues, those are inspector issues, those are Public Works issues. If we don't think those are strong enough, if we think that needs to be bumped up in terms of the number and therefore the cost, let's talk about that. But that's not landlord registry. It might impact their job, it might make their job easier, it might make it harder. But let's, I just want us all to know that if we're really gonna address this issue that was put forth by Alderman Williams, you know, with the, the jumpstart of a landlord registry, and then somehow we had an infusion about the chronic nuisance abatement ordinance, and, which is about criminal activity and how, and I can tell you, as somebody who had to have the invocation of the chronic nuisance abatement, it is a complicated, tedious, drawn-out process, and if not for our NPO Officer Musson, and at the time, Chief Winslow, it, it would have just fell off. It had just fell off the edge. I mean, it is a complicated, long-term, drawn-out process. It could be improved. Landlord registry may or may not have any impact on that. So, anyway, I just, I appreciate it that you asked for a report. I appreciate that the Director of Public Works is gonna be involved in somehow providing data. You're not gonna get a lot of cases for, on chronic nuisance abatement ordinance. I mean, it's, it's complex, it's complicated. It takes a long time for an officer to follow that, to put it together, to bring it forth, to get action. The things that we'd like to see improved as a result of a landlord registry, which are these housing violations, these, this property abandonment, this property deterioration, I was gonna call you Representative Alderman Hanauer, immediately made a pivot to overgrown grass. All right? That has nothing to do with the chronic nuisance abatement ordinance, but it does have everything to do.
I disagree with you on that.
Well, you're right. I mean, there could be some bridging, but it has everything to do with what are the issues that need to be addressed. I mean, you were right to, you were right to bring up the issue.
Alderman Donlin has asked to speak. Do you mind if he speaks to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Polly, I appreciate you coming. I know your, your heart has always been and better in this community. You've done a lot of really, really good things. Your point about, I kind of ran into the same issue when I was, when I went to look for this, the ordinance and the chronic nuisance. I, you're right, when I did, first did the search, the section that dealt with the policing, policing activities came up, and I thought, this isn't it? I don't remember. Anyway, I had to do some digging, and, and it's, this is, this, not playing attorney, just playing one on TV, all right? But this is ordinance number 2016-411. You can pull it up by the city's website. And it, it amends Section 98.06, and it defines when it comes to properties and gets into referencing other housing sections that deal with the housing violations that you were talking about. And you're right, it is apples and oranges, and, and as a part of that, as just as a part of that review that the two departments are going to do and provide us some reports, I think we'll have some clarification on, on, on what that's about.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yeah, they're interrelated, but there's, let's take this all apart so we don't get it, you know, kind of buried in statutes that become very difficult to untangle in terms of what enforcement and implementation look like. Let's get this kind of separated out so that we can address some of the housing and the residential issues that are impacting the neighbors, that it do impact people that own property, that do impact, you know, the people in, in, you know, the residential neighborhood. The crime, the crime issues are serious, they're, they're big when they happen, they're very terrorizing to a community. It was very disruptive in Harvard Park when, when the, we had to have the enforcement of the ordinance. But that's not the day-to-day. That's not the voluminous amount of negative impact that lack of enforcement of housing violation has on neighborhoods and, and our property and our value and our worth.
We have three other aldermen signed up to speak, if you...
Yep.
There are now four, Polly, so you get to stay.
Oh, I stay.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I, I want to thank you for coming. You kind of stole the thunder, some of the other groups that are gonna be coming. But, but what I would say, we will get to it. We will get to these problems that we know exist in the neighborhoods after we go through all this, I won't say delay tactics, but after we go through learning, I guess, after we go through the nuisance, and after we go, we're gonna get through what we're defining as what our neighbors are telling us they're tired of seeing. We'll get there. I promise you, we'll get there, and we, as a council, are gonna have to make our minds up on what type of actions we're gonna take to, you know, fix some of this stuff. And, you know, I have promised that I'm gonna work with Director Fuchs and others, and he's gonna do some looking around, and we're, but, but altogether, I still want to involve Icon and all the other neighborhood associations. I know there's others that are coming, but the bottom line is, there's some issues out there that affect neighborhoods right now, that affect property value, and only deal with that. And, and we're gonna get to that. I'm not gonna let anything divert us or, or make us, I was told, we don't go far enough. And since I was told I don't go far enough, we're gonna talk about single dwellings and homes, actually, bad homes too, you know, but we'll get there to address all those issues. I just want to assure you, I'll be in conversation with you and others as I am. I just think we can't bring them all in on the same night, or we'll be here all night. So, thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Polly, for coming in and, and welcoming to Ward Two, but you are totally correct. Many of the issues that, that we're dealing with are, are health and safety violations. I know some time ago, I, you know, me and Alderwoman Conley had talked about some things. I have a sincere will to really implement some form of registration. I don't, I don't necessarily think everybody needs to go on it, but I do think we need to start with the ones that we deal with year in and year out. And, and I just came from Ave Street and talked to the guy, and that...
Thank you for coming out.
There's a yellow, there's a yellow sticker on his door from, from April, you know, and it's June, and, and it's still sitting there. So, I, I totally understand, and I get it. I like to go to see the problems because when you can go see it with your own two eyes, you, you get a different perspective. So, I do join our, our staff, and, 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 you know, I'll be sitting down talking to Mayor Bush soon to really, to really go over some things and see how we can get something for, for the problems that we really want to get after. And, and I totally get where you're coming from. I see y'all in our community working, the nuisance abatement houses that you're talking about. I remember exactly that house and working, working with you and Chief Winslow. So, it does take a while, and we got a lot of work to do. So, I appreciate your staff. As just like I said, I just seen you driving out South Grand with a truck full of stuff, doing, doing, helping out in the community. So, we appreciate your efforts and staying honest and holding us accountable. Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Polly. Where, in my neck of the woods, and I'm gonna tell you just in, in the neighborhood where I've lived for the past thirty-five years, the, the drugs, the alcohol, all lead to the tall grass, to the garbage, to, because they'll sit and they'll party all day long, and they'll throw their bottles and cans and garbage in the front yard, and the grass will grow, and the next thing you know, when they do cut the grass, and now it's all over the neighborhood because they blow it in the streets and everywhere else. So, so we're kind of talking apples to apples, not necessarily in an ordinance, but the nuisance is there. The nuisance is there. So, we know that. Now, how do we, how do we redefine it and, and come to, you know, common goals, how we want to attack this thing? It's gonna take some time, and we're figuring this out. But, but again, I think one thing leads to another. So...
And, and our issue is access to the individuals who are accountable.
Right.
If you're a landlord, I, I like to call it, you know, you're, this is owner-for-profit. It's owner-for-profit. And if you're, if you own a business for the intention of making profit, and you kept some of it, like some of these houses are kept, nobody would come to your business, nor should they. It would not, nightlot looks safe to walk in, but it certainly wouldn't look, have much curb appeal to walk up to, to see if that's where you wanted to buy a swimming pool, or if, if that's where you wanted to buy a new car.
So, so with that being said, as a landlord or a property owner, and you, you, when you interview these tenants to move into your property, you know, you're, you're taking the responsibility of these tenants to, to, to maintain this property. So, it falls back on the, on the tenant as much as the homeowner.
Well, I don't know if as much, but...
Well, I'm just saying, then, then you drag it through the court system because it's, it's a headache to, you know, then, then a higher body of jurisdiction takes over, and, and that's where you end up. So, again, I mean...
It's an accountability issue. It's an accountability issue.
Very big one.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Alderwoman Conley? Absolutely. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And Polly, you know, we've, we've had a lot of talks about this. I just want to gently add to what Alderman Donlin was trying to say, in that the chronic nuisance ordinance does actually regulate very directly, at least those properties that are listed as vacant properties. And the nuisances, and so there is, there's a, the definition, there's a one, and then there's a two. The two covers all of the criminal activity that you were talking about. The one covers all of those garbage, weeds, vehicles, all of that stuff. So, we already do have that bridge in there, I think, and it's, you know, you gotta follow the cross-references, and...
Yeah.
We pulled them up. I, I think we probably need to be looking at, and once we see how this has or has not been working up until now, I think what we probably need to do is maybe the next connection we're looking at is, is moving, is connecting this to the properties that are not just vacant or actively being managed by an outside broker. So, I think, and I think it's, it's actually probably a more simple leap than even a different, you know, piece of fruit, so, but thank you for coming in because it was one of our questions. We did want to make sure that, you know, Icon was engaged, and, not that I'm saying that you aren't, because I think anyone who's tried to duck Icon is faster than I am, at least. You've, Icon itself has done a lot for our neighborhoods, and, and I know you have been, I mean, you have subcommittees that have been working on these issues and brought us all sorts of information. I, I don't think it'll be difficult to see where the errors exist and how this was, was being implemented, and I think that there are a lot of opportunities for improvement. And I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you that I'm optimistic and hopeful that we will see improvements in, in how this is enforced. And, and I do think we probably need to be making that leap pretty soon to connect it not just vacant properties, not just illegal activity, but also connect that to properties that, that has someone living in them and is, they're still not doing what they should be. Just, it's neighborly. It's just a, it's a basic, you know, basic neighborly, and it's, it's all over the place.
It's financial. It's neighborly, it's financial, it's residential integrity, it's the pride of the city.
Exactly.
I want people to feel as proud to move to Harvard Park or to Enos Park, or to Bun Park, as they are anywhere else they might wish to live in the city, because it looks like that's a place I'd want to live. And if we don't hold people accountable who own the property in those places, it will not look like that, and it, they will not come. And we need that. We need that as a city.
We do. And I will say, there's some gorgeous properties in Harvard Park, and, and I, I know yours is probably one of them. It's one of them.
A lot over and for.
And it's been very well-maintained, and, and we need to see that encouraged and grown.
And people work so hard. I mean, there's so many lovely people in this town that live east of MacArthur who work hard, who maintain their homes, do the best they can, and they deserve, they deserve for any other property owned by any other person in that neighborhood to look the same and to be the same. And, and, and if we don't do it as a community, then it doesn't get done. And then we, as a community, fail to look like the kind of city we wish to look like so that people want to live here and to kind of, you know, free to move about the cabin, you know, because the cabin look good. You, you all work so hard. Public Works is, you know, you could give all of your money to Public Works, and I'd be a happy camper, because they work hard. The inspectors and the people there work so hard, might not be enough of them, and the job might be too big, but it is not a criticism of what's being done, it's just a plea for what more could we do in a way that holds people accountable, not spend more of the taxpayers' money, not give more calls to you that, like, what do I do with this, and where is Dave, and how does he have a right to go on vacation, because I can't find out if the inspector came out or not? We don't want that. You know, we, we want just people to be accountable to what they own, because it impacts everybody else and impacts us as a city. I love this city. I love, I mean, I, I don't even know how you run for office to do what you do. It's hard work. But if we don't all kind of work together and, and sort of set a standard of accountability, then, then we go down together.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that wish to address the council? Looks like Mr. Johnson has his hand up, and then we'll get Mr. Nudo after that. Good thing I know a lot of these people.
James Johnson, Eastside resident. I had to piggyback on some stuff that I said today. I'm gonna try to be quick with it. First thing, the respect. Let's be... I'm going to try to be quick with it. Uh, first thing, the respect. Let's be done with that respect. Respect is earned. You have to respect yourselves. You have to respect, then you get respect from others. If you've been around as long as Mr. Redpath, you'll get that respect. And that gentleman that was in that seat before him, that's respect. You know, it, it'll come, but you just have to, you got to do your time. You know, I even had to, I've been around just as long as Mr. Redpath and the respect will come. Second thing, George O'Rourke wrote a book. I want you to read it. 1989, Big Brother's Watch. So, when it come, eighty, eighty-four. There you go. Sorry.
You can get it at the library.
Yeah, you can get it at the library. Yes. But see, she knew what I was talking about though. So, in this book, it talks about who's watching. So, with that police department and, and I'm, I'm for whatever they need to do to watch and keep our community safe, there's no more privacy anymore. Your privacy is in your home. So, as a citizen on the east side in Springfield, I am all for whatever the police has to do to keep all of us safe and to, to catch criminals in the act. So, whatever we need to do, let's do it. To the police chief, I need you guys to be proactive and not reactive. Now, I'm going to get ahead of the gun because I don't want y'all to overreact. So, now that schooling let out, see over on the east side, there's already been some shootings. So, when it hits your ward and your neighborhood and all of that, don't overreact. Stay calm. It's not a gang problem. Springfield don't have a gang problem, but the chief, they have to title it somehow. We don't. We have individuals who have problems. We have some issues in our community. I hear you talking about our communities and how they look. We got a homeless problem you guys going to have to deal with here real soon. You know, we got mental illness, not to mention the drug problems. So, this is why our neighborhoods are starting to look like they're starting to look. And people don't have respect. We got to go back to the schools and that's why money that we do for programs to our kids, and it's not just the off track or the, how did chief call it? The, the troubled youth. No, we need to focus on all the youth, you know. We need to start teaching them. We have youth right now and, and it's going to get off my topic, but when we have youth that can't read that clock on the wall, we have a problem. And I'm talking about high schoolers. So, we got to go further back. We can put, we can put money into the police and the grass and whatever. That's fine and dandy. But we got to start focusing on our youth. And, and Mayor, the other issue that I'm going to be bringing up this year is.
Pittsburgh Steelers?
No, no. They're not going to Super Bowl. Is, is how our senior citizens are being dealt with, you know, on, in our communities. Um, there's some things that I'm finding out as I go through my process of what I'm dealing with. There's some serious issues that I want from the past corporate counsel. And so, there are some things that I want to touch on and talk about. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to give you the same respect that I gave all the other mayors in the past. I'm never going to blindside you at this mic about anything. But when there's some issue that's pressing, I'm going to come in, I'm, I'm going to call and I'm going to address it. Now, one thing I do want to mention that you guys can put on your plate that's going to happen too, is issues with that lake. So, that money you just gave to, to whatever, you're going to need to dredge that lake eventually in somebody's terms. Ask Doug. We had a conversation now, Director. Um, it's going to need done. And one thing I'm going to ask is now that the Cold Ash Pond is starting to be taken care of, that neighborhood to the east of the Cold Ash Pond, now, those people at, in that neighborhood, the backs to that Cold Ash Pond, yeah, you guys need to compensate them. Cause I'm sure they had some serious issues in their backyards or in their houses and so on. So, believe me, that will be coming up down the road too. So, I'm going to be respectful of my time. My time is up, but I will be back. Good to see you guys.
Jane.
And to all the directors who made it, uh, congratulations. Fire chief, you off the hook today.
Hey, James, uh, my communications director, Haley Wilson, is right in the front row. I have a meeting coming up this week with AARP. So, if there's something you want me to discuss with them about the elderly in our community, please tell Haley and I'll discuss that with them. I meet with them this week.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Nudo.
Good job, James. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I wasn't, uh, signed up to speak, but after all the discussion that I've heard here tonight, I felt compelled to, uh, come up and introduce myself again. Some of you on the council know me. My name is Tony Nudo. I am the treasurer of the Springfield Area Landlord Association. Um, and we've been working on this issue of the problems in Springfield for a long time. And always come, everybody wants to push everything back to the owner of a property. Um, and you know, there are some things as an owner of a property that I do need to take care of. Um, but we're, we're limiting the amount of people that can help clean the city up. We need to make all residents of Springfield accountable for what happens in Springfield and we need their help. We need their help to keep our properties clean, clear of garbage, keep their vehicles up kept and, and from being parked and not being worked on. So, um, I think there are some things that we need to do. We need to look at some different avenues. Always putting it on the property owner. And, and we're always talking about landlords having problems with their properties. I see a lot of properties around that aren't landlord owned properties that have a lot of problems. I have some buy my properties and, um, they actually make my properties, uh, worse than what they are in, in these neighborhoods. So, we need to be focused on the properties and the people of Springfield because properties don't do anything. They don't go bad. They are let go bad by people. So, it's not specifically a property problem. It's a people problem. And there are all kinds of people in Springfield. We, we need all their help to solve this problem. Um, and while the, the gentleman was from Carr was up here speaking and you all had questions, I was sitting back there just chomping my, my teeth because I knew the answers. Um, Alderman Hannah, the, the ordinance that they were talking about, you were, you were speaking about there was a reset every year. That has a two-year, um, reset on it. So, if you get these violations within two years, then you get to, uh, get your property put on the chronic nuisance, uh, list. So, there's, it actually doesn't, those nuisances don't reset every year. And, and grass is included in that, I'm sure.
I, I'm, and, and thank you, Tony. I, I think that, uh, and, and it's been so long since I've looked at the ordinance. I appreciate that. Um, I think our problem more than anything is just lack of enforcement. I think that that's the number one problem that we have with it. And it, and, you know, the grass is a good example. Um, they come up, they show a picture, it's been cleared, no, no fine. If you had, if you would get a fine every time you have to come up, you're going to make sure it's, it's cut.
Well, absolutely. I don't get fines when, when I have that problem.
So, I appreciate.
Cause I get them cut. I get it done.
Appreciate the information. We got two years, so maybe we need to increase that. So.
Yeah, that, that time period is two years. If you get three violations within two years, 24 months, that's what it stated in, in the ordinance. So, it doesn't reset every year. Thank God, you know, because that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase has something she wants to say to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Tony, for coming up to speak too and also just not target just landlords. Cause like you said, we just lost three houses, uh, in Enos Park to property homeowners and not landlords. And they were just letting the properties go. They were letting, they were having things in the yard where it was just looking really, really bad. So, I, I do, I do want to make sure that we include all property owners too, outside of just having landlords as well. I think that would be really good.
Yes. And, you know, remember after 2008, we had a lot of discussion on properties that were in disrepair. And there were a huge amount of foreclosures after, after 2008. And every time a property that was in disre- disrepair was talked about, they were always talking about it like it was a rental property. And that's just not always true. A lot of those properties that, uh, needed some help were in foreclosure. You know, there's a time period for redemption and, you know, who's responsible for that? Well, that, uh, they always get blamed on a landlord and they're not landlord properties.
You, you know, you're saying that and, uh, Director Fuchs, I'm not for sure how this works. So, there was a property that was sitting vacant since November, but it just got purchased on the sale tax at the county building. But the grass is almost up to maybe my hip and it hadn't been taken care of at all. Now, you can't touch that property till Ju- uh, June 14th until Judge Giganti give us permission to go on that, that property. But do we take care of that if we have that long timeframe and it's just sitting there?
It all depends on whether the county, uh, is in possession, possession of it or we are. And there's a really mixed bag on all these. Believe you me, I've been dealing with a lot of this in the last couple of weeks. We got grass growing everywhere. Who owns it? How long have they owned it? Who really owns it? What LLC is this? Where did it go? And who are they? So, uh, to answer your question right now, I couldn't do it, but it's a, it's a problem. It's a real issue and it comes onto my desk every single day.
He just brought up something a, a good way. And so, listening to all of my colleagues speak, Madam Mayor, I think it would be good when you get ready to start your award meetings to give, I, I keep going back to this welcome packet too, where we just list what's going on. Cause not everybody watches. Every Tuesday, we have a good amount of people, but just education for everyone up here and in the community, how the process works. I think that that will help with some clarity too.
I'll have my staff work with you on the welcome packet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the last thing while, um, you are up here, Director, um, our property outside of the rail for the tracks, the grass is extremely high. Uh, my neighborhood associations want to go out and do garbage pickups, but I don't think that we should do that until it gets cut. I don't know what timeframe we're on right now with rotation, but I, I've learned the inside of the gate to the track is the railroad. The outside of the gate is our, uh, property to take care. And the grass looks atrocious.
On the outside?
Yes, on the outside. I made sure of it.
In, on, in Ward Five, I mean, specifically where?
Oh, yeah, Ward Five. I'm talking about Ward Five.
Well, I.
Ward Four.
If, if you got, if you got a spot.
I will, I will send you that. But I think just even looking at that, I don't know what rotation we're on with cutting the grass for that too.
Alderman Purchase.
Alderwoman.
Alderman Voss would be really proud of you picking up the railroad grass.
Would have been proud.
Looking down, man.
Alderwoman Conley.
And Mayor, I have to apologize. I forgot something in new business.
Oh, we don't need Mr. Nudo anymore. Mr. Nudo, is this about Mr. Nudo's comments?
It is not. That's why I was going to say. So, if, if people want to continue asking questions, um, I was just more, I need to.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. Nudo, you have a minute thirty-seven left. Are you done?
Okay. And about the grass, uh, you know, the, if, if you get a violation for grass on a property, the city sends out a notice. You have about seven days to, uh, to take care of it. They, um, generally send them out on Thursdays because I always get stuff like that on a Friday evening. I don't understand why. But then I've got all weekend to take care of those things. But you get about seven days and then after that, an inspector comes back and inspects it. At that point, the city can send somebody over there to mow the grass for $250 and they'll charge the property owner that, that amount. So, the grass can get mowed. A lot of times what happens is on the empty lots, uh, nobody ever calls. The city doesn't know. I have a, I have a lot next to a property of mine that is owned by the city. Every once in a while, I have to call on the city. So, you all call on me, I call on you too. Um, but what the, the point is, is that we are, we are keeping the city, uh, everybody's helping to keep the city, uh, grass cut. And, and I don't like tall grass. Nobody does. But it, it, you know, what, the system we have now works. We just have to implement it. And I think that, uh, if we give the mayor some time, she's going to do a good job to get everything running smoothly.
I did ask for time because I met my one month mark of being the mayor yesterday. So, it's kind of hard to enforce code of ordinances. It's been there since 2016 in one month. But yes.
If you have any questions?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah. So, on the lots, in particular, um, lots that, uh, we have tore the house down, after we tear the house down, they turn the jung- into jungles, you know. Uh, and then I'm starting to learn that's because, um, they're not, they're still the counties, i- if, if you know what I mean.
Some of them are. Yes, sir.
So, so some of them, okay, I'll give you that. Some are. The, those are the type of things I'm trying to get addressed on, on, when I talk about lots. Because I'm trying to figure out how the count, how to, he left the room, but Fuchs can't cut, he'll cut the county lot. They don't like to cut county lots.
Well.
And, and, and that.
Send them a bill like you do the rest of us.
Well, 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 he tries to cut the, what we own already as a city first, which means that county lots are delayed. So, now they're even taller, like the railroads. They're, they're even taller and even more out of control. When I talk to the county, they go, well, we don't have a department. We, we, we don't have a department that does that. Uh, let me say it like that, you know. So, so we have some stuff that we even talk to with them to try to help out with, with some of this grass cutting. Cause again, the perception is, it's the Alderman and the mayor's fault because that's the Springfield. When in reality, the lot they're talking about isn't under the mayor or the Alderman's control. I mean, you know, it's, it's a capital township or it's, uh, the county and all that. And these, all these things have to be worked out and addressed on some kind of listing and people keeping track. I don't know if it means more employees or what, but that's what's going to help with, with, with maintaining some of these lots. Cause we have a whole lot of them. So.
I understand. But when you say they're owned by the county, are they in the county, not the city? Or are they in, um, have they, have the taxes not been paid on them and the county's holding them? Is that what you're talking about?
A little bit of all of it, to be honest with me.
If they're in the city, if they're in the city and somebody's not paying the taxes, you all can send a notice to wherever the tax bill goes and then you can go and mow it. And then you can send a bill there. Now, Missy knows how to collect money on those kind of bills. She's done a fine job of it so far.
Most of them say Sangamon County trustee.
Yeah, that's a gentleman down in, um, Southern Illinois that's bought the taxes on them. Okay? That's who that guy is. He's a lawyer. Not exactly. Not exactly. He's not ex- he's not, he's not an employee of the, of the county. A lot of the properties on the east side, you go to the tax sale, that gentleman's selling them for $800. You can buy any one of them you want for $800. And they're owned by a gentleman that has bought the taxes on those vacant lots because the owners didn't pay for them. So, he's bought the taxes and he's taken possession of the properties and he's trying to sell them at the, uh, county tax sale. Eight hundred bucks. You can buy them all.
So, we should be charging him is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
You, you saying we should charge him $250?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that those properties aren't county owned properties. They're owned by a person. He just calls himself Sangamon County trustee. And he, he's, he's down south in the southern county. He's a lawyer, it's a lawyer's office. Cause I've bought some of the, some properties from them. So, if you send a notice to wherever the tax bill goes, because if he's purchased that pro- if he's purchased the taxes and he, he owns the property now, the tax bills are going to go to him. He's paying them. And they're, they're next to nothing. So, he's paying them. His hope is that he's going to sell those properties and make sure $300. If you do that on a hundred of them, that's great. But you can send, you can send him the notice, have the city, uh, crews go out and cut them, send them the $250 bill. And then, you know, maybe he'll hire somebody to, uh, go and cut them. If not, have the city cut them again.
I thank you for that. This is very interesting.
Well, it, it, when you, I, I, I was wondering, you know, when you were talking about that they were county owned properties in the city. Well, if they're not a hole in the doughnut, they're city, they're s- they're in, they're in the city, they're owned by that, the, the trustee, the county, the Sangamon County trustee, which he's, he's a lawyer.
But he's just out of city. Yeah, he's just.
Yeah, he, I, I think his office is down south somewhere. He's, he's a tax buyer. He's a delinquent tax buyer.
Registration is to hold somebody accountable because I think the bad landlords make the good landlords look bad.
Well, bad people make good people look bad all the time.
Yeah. And so, we need to do something about that though.
No, it's not just about landlords. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, I mean, I don't care if we call them property owners or landlords. We still have to have somebody to hold it accountable.
How about bad residents of Springfield that don't cut the grass? They're making us all look bad because I cut mine. Hannah is going to come after me if I don't. I know he is.
Thank you, Mr. Nudo.
Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Conley, did you have something you want to share?
Be really quick. And this is because I've, sorry, do I have the, do I have the?
Yes, ma'am. You do. Yes, ma'am, you do. You have the floor.
Just want to be sure. Um, I just, real quick, because I, I said I would mention this and I forgot under new business, um, Pride Night at Springfield Horseshoes is June twenty-second. Um, please use Coral Pride as the coupon code when you're buying tickets. And also the Pride Pic, Pride Picnic will be this weekend, no, June seventeenth, sorry. I'm gonna have to upgrade my reading glasses. June seventeenth, five P M. at Lincoln Park, shelter number four.
Have another meeting before then next week.
Yes, we do. But I just wanted to, I, I had said I'd, said I would mention it and I apologize for not.
Cause we'll bring up Juneteenth.
Thank you for your, um, and also just June is Pride Month. So, um, where are your umbos? Thank you very much.
Gotcha. All right. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting. First and second, meeting is adjourned. Alderwoman Purchase. Alderman Donlin's got him too. He's very popular tonight.